You should chair it.
Going to call the order, the regular score me for the month of February for the Sole and Community's Board of Directors. Chris, can you call the roll?
I can. Wolf.
Yeah.
Rockholtz.
Here.
Coons.
Here.
Alaska.
Here.
Beazoom. Brown.
Here.
Student rep Bree Henning.
Here.
Ledge Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to those who are here online already. Celebration of achievement, Davis.
Yeah, we've got, I've got a handout for you that will kind of walk through the meeting. Sammy McAtee, a teacher at the intermediate school. She's also our sponsor for the Alpha Club, received the Achievement in Education Award by the Optimist Club. And then Jody Lime Cooler is our sponsor for FBLA. At the district, we had a number of our students do very well placing top, top five in multiple events. So want to give a shout out to our students and our sponsor, Jody Lime Cooler on that.
And last year we had some, they did well last year as well.
Went to the national.
Yeah, they have something. After the nationals, yeah. So it'll be interesting to see how, is there some overlap from last year or something? Focus on learning.
Yeah, just quickly, high school, they had ICAP conferences and the ICAP team. Well, high school does conferences four times a year, just one night, four times a year. The February one is all around ICAP. They had ninth, 10th and 11th grade. For ninth grade, they had seventy-two percent of the students represented with a parent that came to conferences. In 10th grade, they had more of an open house where they went through concurrent enrollment and academies and career tech and things like that. And they had fifty percent of the parents or the students represented at that open house. And then in 11th grade, the juniors, they met with their seminar teacher for, for ICAP purposes. And sixty-three percent of the students were represented by a parent at the conferences. So they're very pleased with the turnout. They've done a good job of going back and after action review, looking to see how, how they can increase those numbers and things like that. They're already talking about next spring, instead of a one night, have the conferences, give the teachers, the seminar teachers, for example, they have a roster of fifteen to twenty kids. Give them like a two-week window to schedule with parents to ensure closer to a hundred percent instead of a one-night deal. So that's, that's something that they're discussing and looking at in the future calendar.
So just your question.
Yeah.
The contract though, they have to be available all this time?
Yeah, it would equate to, I mean, right now we keep, you know, four, four nights out of the year. We keep them basically a full day.
Okay.
Like two Thurs, two consecutive Thursdays, half-day, half-day into the evening. So it would equate to one day. So we would just, over a two-week period.
Still just one day for those.
Yes, yes, absolutely. The time would not exceed what we typically do. Great question. Yeah, so for the admin report, I wanted to just quickly with, with our consent agenda, that's the next item. I just wanted to really walk through very quickly on the sheet here as far as take any questions that you may have on any of those items. We are taking big steps forward and now that we've got that grant secured, Sean put together the, the camera order. So we're going to place an order for all these cameras, interior and exterior throughout our four buildings. Our bus bids. Hogland is the winner of the new bus bid and Hogland is a bus that we haven't purchased for a while. They've got the, the newer ones have now the Cummings engine, which is what our current buses have. But the Hogland has the nose on them where the engine is up front. I think our mechanical much prefer just lifting the hood and taking care of everything instead of digging in underneath. The reason why we haven't gone with Hogland in the past is one, they used an international engine that we weren't too fond of and two, because of the conventional bus, their capacity is only up to seventy-seven and we've been getting the eighty-six. Now, these are going to be route buses. And so, you know, we like the eighty-six passenger for activities. We've been taking eighty-six passenger buses on, on routes, but we don't want to put that many kids with a daily route driver. So the shorter buses, the seventy-seven capacity will more than suffice. And they were the cheapest. So Lakeview Elementary, we're going to, part of the renovation, we're going to put all new ceiling mounted projectors in the classrooms and conference rooms. They have them now, but they were the first building that we really, that in the high school that installed them in. And they're old and the lumens are weak. So when the teachers flip on all their lights and it's a nice sunny day, it's kind of hard to, it fades. Well, Sean, we were, we're, we're going to put lasers, we, we bought laser printers. These are laser, laser projectors. So the lumens will be extremely high, the highest lumens that will have in the district. And we're just going to purchase them early, get them installed early prior to the big project. Because the price that Sean got on them was Sean said would save us about ten grand in the long run. So the special are running, so. Meaning they'll tie right into their computer, is that what you mean? In a document camera, it all, yeah, it all works right into as, as they do now, it'll work just the same as what they've got now. It'll just be newer technology and brighter lumens.
Instead of an LED, it'll be a laser.
Yeah, so we won't be changing bulbs. After ten, twelve years, we'll change the whole system, so. Again, another Lakeview project that we had planned in the renovation was to heating and cooling, HVAC. We can't wait on the part in the cafeteria kitchen. It went kapui last spring. We're piecing it together right now. So we've got a bid to just get that taken care of now, which the same mechanical engineer that designed the revamp of our entire system, this will tie in right next to it.
This is, this is bond money, yes.
It, yeah, we're going to use bond money for it. Same, we're going to use bond money with those projectors too, since that was part of our idea too. Going to purchase a scoreboard at the baseball field. That's something that that baseball project had been working for a couple of years. They did secure a grant from the casino. They got some private donations. And so they do have the money to purchase the Daktronics scoreboard.
Daktronics is out of?
I think Des Moines.
Brooklyn, South Dakota.
Thank you. Okay, our sales rep is out of Des Moines.
That's their base.
Oh, yeah. And, and pleased with Daktronics because that's all of our other scoreboards. So people who are running this scoreboard have easily know how to run this scoreboard and things like that. Okay. And then the other thing is just, I know Pat worked with the finance team as far as looking at BSAP, their budget and their wages for their employees. And so we haven't really touched employee wages there for BSAP for a while. So this will be a nice boost in compensating those kids and bringing back, you know, the, the adults that we have in that program. So those are the, the items for the consent.
Thanks, Davis.
Yeah.
Uh, consent agenda. Well, sorry, I don't think there's any board tour updates this month. So unless I'm missing something from somebody, no. So consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent, consent agenda as presented. My students, second by Wolf. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries unanimously. You guys scroll down because I can't see the rest of the agenda.
Oh, yep, sorry.
I didn't bring a computer tonight. Okay, action items. Second reading of board policies, one hundred and two hundred series, four oh one point one and equal employment opportunity. I don't think we had any guidance to the administration after we reviewed the first reading. So unless somebody came up with something they want to discuss. We're open to moving the second meeting. Motion to approve the second meeting with one policy, one hundred and two hundred series, four oh one point one, equal opportunity, equal employment opportunity. Motion by Coons.
Okay.
Second by Roll Calls. Any discussion? Thanks for staying on top of these things. The law has changed faster than we can keep policies updated. So we'll get another batch coming, I'm guessing later this spring. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries unanimously. Next up is the first reading of board policies, one oh four, one hundred and forty-four point anti-bullying harassment policy, five oh two point seven, student substance abuse, six oh five point three R one, reconsideration instructional materials regulations, seven thirteen staff technology, social networking, removal of all one oh four procedure, and removal of all one oh four procedural policies.
Okay.
Davis, the Policy Committee, one of you want to, or Governors Committee, one of you want to give us a rundown?
Yeah, you bet. And so on the anti-bullying harassment policy, currently that policy is pages, one, it's got fourteen pages. What, pages four through fourteen are pretty much forms. What we're asking is we remove the forms. Right now, those forms are locked in and it does restrict our investigative procedures or practices. The first three pages are ISB language, you know, we don't tolerate bullying. This is kind of the process we take. This is how you report. And then, like I said, from, from after the language, then the remainder of that policy is forms. We do have pulse, forms that we use that have been more investigative friendly. And I, I would say easier for those, those submitting a referral to understand when filling out, you know, the initial form, when seeing investigative, you know, process and things like that. And so we're just asking that by removing those, that we'll have our own set of forms that we can tweak to better align to our practice.
I was just, I think this points, for a while I asked you, was giving recommend or suggested forms for almost everything that went in those process. And I think they've been pulling back from that recommendation because every district are doing things differently. And so I think.
Our, our process still aligns with the trainer that was brought in probably nine years ago. And it's just what happened is those, those exact forms got put into board policy. And as we've used them and we've learned that there's some areas that, you know, changes and updates and things like that. And without a board policy change, we can't update those at all. So.
These things that just completely go away, they go into a handbook, they go into?
They, well, they go into folders. Yeah.
I mean, it's not like, it's not represented anyplace else. It's just for your tool, right?
For our tools. There'll be one, one form that remains and that will be the intake form. And we do want to tweak that. It's, it's pretty cumbersome right now. We want it to be an easy form for a parent or a student or a child, you know, to be able to complete that, to initiate the investigation. Yeah.
So this would go in kind of, kind of an administrative handbook?
Yes, yes. A staff administrative handbook, yeah. The, the five oh two point seven substance abuse, that's just a language change. That's again ISB recommendation. We're, we're going to use substance abuse, which will encompass smoking, alcohol, drugs.
And it had been.
Call that smoking, alcohol, drugs.
Drugs. It's been called that. The, the new language is just, it will encompass substance abuse to really.
Well, it's a big problem too, because there's a lot of.
Yes. The reconsideration committee or the reconsideration of instructional materials. Remember, we have a committee to where if, if a, a certain portion of our curriculum or a library book or something is challenged, as far as I don't think that's appropriate. We have board policy where a, a board committee
That we approve every year.
That we approve every year, that has administrator, librarian, staff, parents, students on this committee that will take it and then provide the board with a recommendation, new law that passed that went into effect in January, remove students from the reconsideration committee. Our language currently states that two students will be on that committee. So this will just remove the students from the reconsideration committee.
Have you reached out to the students to let them know? The committee hasn't met in decades.
Going to get this changed and then, yeah.
We'll reach out to them and let them know what's going on. Okay.
Yeah. And then the other policy, seven thirteen staff technology, social networking, that's actually moving to the four hundred series. So.
Just an aside quick, since we, we had bullying training nine years ago.
Yep.
Might be something to revisit within the next year.
Yep.
You know, just things may have changed and.
We, we do participate in investigation training.
Yeah.
But to, to accompany that, yeah.
Might be worth looking to see if there's.
Yeah.
And Davis, I talked about, kind of, in our year, I think, some updates on the broad behavioral side things. Referrals of the elementary, middle school.
Yeah.
Elementary through the high school level, the office, and then also, you know, whether investigations never founded, kind of what, what they're centered around. Any questions? Motion, vote to approve, you have attended? Motion by Coons.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Any further discussion? Are we any concerns over changing the bullying policy?
No.
Okay. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, next up is the budget adjustment guarantee resolution for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. And this.
Will you talk on that?
So this is basically budget guarantee guarantees a hundred and one percent of our revenue from the preceding year. And it's meant to deal with flips where you have a big classic. For schools like us, we need a big class that graduates and a smaller kindergarten class that comes in and your numbers dip per year. And so we had that with point in this year where we had, we got rid of lots of kids and, you know, more, more kids graduated than came to kindergarten. So we have to, this allows us to protect our budget. And so it's not clear. Pat's not sure if we need it, but if we don't approve the resolution, then we can't use it. So it depends, this really factors into what the state comes back with from a money standpoint. So if the state gives us, if the state were to do zero percent increase, we'd still guarantee to get at least what we had last year. And so this, yeah. But yeah, if we, if we don't do this and it comes into play, then we can't, we don't have the guaranteed money. So this is I, you know, there's your, Pat thinks we're going to be just, we'll be above the guarantee, but it's close enough that since the legislature has not approved their SSA as required within thirty days of meeting, we are now at a spot where it's best to do this because we don't know what we're going to get. So.
Motion to approve the budget adjustment resolution for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year.
As presented, this is, this is a roll call.
I would like to do a roll call.
This one's a roll call. So we have the motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Coons. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing them, roll call?
Wolf.
Yes.
Rockholtz.
Yes.
Coons.
Yes.
Alaska Online.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, informational items. We have financial indicators. We're going to have Casey here, but he's at State Wrestling today. So we decided to push that off till we could actually be here so that we could. Can you wrestle again? Or he wrestles tonight, right?
He did that in districts.
Did that.
Yeah, top ranked, yeah. So these, I, I put graphs in the, the packet. This is some data that Pat shares a couple of times a year. Our indicators, a common graph that she presents to you. You can see, one note that I wanted you to see is the salary benefit ratio. You know, we like to be around seventy-eight, eighty percent of our budget, keep spent on personnel. Stay in that range. You can see in two thousand twenty-three, it dipped to seventy-six. That's because our real number would be closer to seventy-nine percent. I put that in there. But we took ISL dollars, instructional support levy dollars, and we put that into we should, in, into purchasing some vans and some computers and some other things that we typically take out of Pebble. But we are shoring up Pebble in, in preparation for, to start kickoff these projects. And so Pat said, think of it as if you've got a, you know, a dollar in this pot, what we did is we put another dollar in. So now you've got two dollars sitting there. Now when you're making that percentage, we, we've added the value of the dollars now two dollars. And so as we're, as we're calculating the percent spent on personnel, we've added.
So we, we've been, we've kept salaries, salaries and benefits the same, but we've increased it to vanity by spending more money.
Better way, yeah. Thank you.
So, yeah, so we try to, it's different because we, we spent more money out of the ISL, which counts against this ratio on things that are not salaries.
But in reality, we've kind of stayed right at that mark.
So have you seen, it would have been seventy-nine percent?
Correct, yeah.
But we instead of spending it on salaries, we spent it elsewhere?
No, we, what we, we spent, what we spent on salaries is the same, just we spent more, we counted it somewhere else. So that you like diluted it. So if normally it's eighty percent, then we actually eighty out of a hundred. But now we went eighty out of a hundred and five because we took five in from someplace else.
So we can draw from it?
Yeah.
But it wasn't used for salaries. So therefore.
Right, so that.
Total spend was there, but.
Because it's the salary benefit ratio. That's what this measures. It's kind of a.
Sometimes, sometimes we, for one time shifting of money, will do that.
This is the whole thing about the silos and the state allows us to move money around.
Why did we want it? Why, why did we want it to?
We're trying to save money.
Save money Pebble. We typically would, we, we took what we typically. Yes. Yes.
Other money rented in places we could spend it from.
Yes, yeah. So our indicators look good. Consistent, yeah. Uh, one more thing for informational line. I just want to say that we're, we're getting into this project, Amy, and I talked about it yesterday. The SIS project. And, you know, within that project, we have planned and we've always had planned to address the playground. So met with Mel and Holly, who are going to work on that together. We're putting a, a committee together that will consist of teachers from both buildings, parents with kids at the building coming up, those two administrators, they're going to work on contacting three or four companies, getting catalogs and just start picking out things that they would desire in a playground as such. And then our hope, and I know it's February already, but our hope is that we could maybe start installation this summer.
And is that, that holding?
That will be bond.
That's still bond.
Still going to use bond money. This will be part of the project. This will be at CIST. Yeah. And then with this process, what we'll do is once, if we can get that done this summer, then we'll use that same type of procedure and, and, and start addressing. We may address the Lakeview Playground before we even get inside Lakeview.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of the bond.
And so this, this kind of moves that up here because I know we originally said when they finished with the CIST buildings.
Correct.
So we think we can put it in a spot where.
That's our hope.
When it doesn't interfere with construction.
And, and right now, as we walked the spot several times, really, we're going to have to go south of our existing concrete, which will be towards Fifth Street. We're trying to protect and save that green space on the other side of the fire lane that goes back. It, we want to keep green space for those kids to still run and throw the football and kick the soccer ball. And, and so we don't want to put concrete back there.
So is the plan still the kind of good ideas and then send them off to them and say, these are some general ideas we have and this is the money we have available and it's, it's a, give us your best pitch for what you think would work?
Yes, yes.
And they're going to design also Lakeview but not start it this summer?
We'll wait, no, we'll wait till we get this installed, then we'll start from scratch. Go mimic that process and start in on Lakeview, yeah.
You got the Lakeview parents in the industry because those kids are flowing in there.
Correct, yep, yep.
Sounds good. Board learning, we were supposed to watch those webinars.
Yeah, I said you two webinars. Most of you have replied that you've seen them, but just pay attention to them. You guys almost have all your credits in for the year. Cassie's already got a email from ISB that she's a rock star.
We talked about Solenty.
Um, yeah.
That question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Solenty, we're still, we're still stuck with the, we're still stuck with spending out the money from COVID money. Right. So it's still, it's still sincere and there are restrictions on how you can spend it and so. Yeah, I guess that. I think we talked about from a finance standpoint, that the goal is to, is to this year make a dent and bring it back down.
Yeah, higher than we want to be, but right now we recognize that given the projects that are coming up.
Wanted to leave it open. We have ownership, eight percent over and we have plans why, you know why? We have plans to make it through. Yeah, we, we did talk about, we talked about, and we bring this up in the subcommittee, which is officially approving changes to the to the targets for this, while we're in this building. So because it's one thing to say, it's like we're outside our targets. We're outside of our traditional targets, but we're within where we've, where we've said we want to be while we're going through this building phase. And maybe we should just explicitly and officially say that at a board meeting. And so we've got this on the agenda. I think we're going to bring that back next month and, and we look towards.
The Kansas will come up and make sure that we have the information.
I forget that you guys aren't in our meetings. That, that would make it a different meeting than we have all the problems.
Um, similar, you're not in the meetings, but take a look at, we didn't have one to do, but take a look at this packet as well. It's more of the information packet about ISB and pushing to the ways that wages changes, also considering the tuition increase.
Yep.
So a lot of information on there. Amber's going to breeze out, figuring that out, thinking through what expansion of that would be like.
Talking place. Jamie.
Uh, well, how do you think say about all the stuff with that going on in all the buildings? Getting a lot of stuff really rolling. Now I'm starting to get excited.
You say that now. You will not say that in a couple of months.
That's true, but for now, it's exciting.
When you, when you guys have to start reviewing change orders and making recommendations to the board on those. I don't want to root it, but I just.
Um, I am excited. That may be the second year I've learned about the FBLA.
Yep.
And just being a businesswoman myself, I am super excited to see the investment that you did and what we've learned.
Free. Yeah.
Um, I'm glad that the ASU just finally addressed it. I was there for a while and helping people who weren't there. It was very well. Good, that's good feedback.
Yeah.
It is good. I think they've done a great job. Amber's done a great job in trying to get the budget in a, in a good spot. So that's always a struggle with these, with these siloed funds. It's like they've got to, they've got to pay it. They've got to pay their way. And so it's a, it's been a struggle to manage that. So she's done a great job. Yeah. I think it's, you know, we've been talking about this branch for safety for so long. And now that purchases are starting to come through, I'll be interested to see. I'd like to see where we're thinking about what the cameras and kind of what our thoughts are in the future. And also I learned what Alaska's hair looked like. And I will say that I am happy that the playground at CIST is going to be a year ahead of schedule because I know that that's been a sore point since we moved in there. So when, when we get a playground, it's like, well, we can't put a playground in until we know where everything's going to be and we get final plans to finish the building. So I'm glad that we're find, find, able to find a way to move it forward in your head. So.
And, and I want to give a shout out to the Sole Economist and Chris, how do you say his last name?
You, Imish?
Yeah, who has really done a good job of covering. Yeah, who who has really done a good job of um, covering Solen.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, last Thursday, he wrote a a great article on the safety grant and all that it entails, and and this week, he's got an article in the paper about. Um, uh, partnering with West Branch, Tipton and Kirkwood for workplace learning and expanding out. That and and even expanding out our VOTech uh, by going full-time next year.
Well, I think those are, it's important, because it's some ways the only way the community kind of interacts with this.
Yeah.
So that's, good coverage is always appreciated.
Absolutely.
Next meeting's in March sometime.
March twenty-first.
March twenty-first.
After spring break, spring break's early this year.
There will be, yeah, keep in mind, we're gonna have some public hearings that are required by law for the budget, they're gonna be coming up. Life is gonna be chaos, because you know, the state hasn't set the, set the SSA yet, and our our stuff is still new at the same time. Um, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by roll calls, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, the rest of the board, the rest of the board is going into exempt session, uh, Bree.